Good evening. Thank you for joining us for our regular scheduled council meeting. It's Tuesday, April 23rd at 7:00 PM. Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll.
Charlie Davidson.
Here.
George Glover.
Here.
Ben Salsetta.
Here.
Charles Swankie.
Here.
Terry Osborne.
Here.
Troy Hill.
Here.
Brandy Bailey.
Here.
Jim Schrader. Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Councilman Schrader notified me tonight that he had a death in the family, would not make it tonight, so our thoughts and prayers are with him. If you'll please rise. Pastor Bob Darnell will lead us in our invocation. And Pastor, I'm sorry, Councilman Salsetta will lead the pledge.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and the administration of this fine city. Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening. You're the almighty God, the Lord of lords and the King of kings. Lord, you set men in authority over cities. And God, you direct their paths. Lord, as they weigh the matters of decisions this evening, Lord, I pray, have your will your way, Father. And Lord, let the wise men of this council and the women, Lord, make wise decisions and matters. In your name we pray, Heavenly Father, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. Okay, we'll start with approval of the agenda. Charlie.
I move that we approve the agenda as it's printed.
Thank you. Brandy.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Motion by Charlie, seconded by Brandy. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed.
Motion passes seven zero. Nobody signed up for public forum tonight. Staff reports. Dee.
Good evening. Marlo's going to hand out a couple of reports to you. The first one we're going to start with is the one that is titled tax distributions. Okay, this report includes the current year-to-date collections near the left-hand side and then annual amounts received for the prior five years. A few rows up from the bottom of the report, the row labeled subtotal property taxes shows you how much we've been increasing in property tax collections each year due to increasing valuations while maintaining the same mill levy, with the exception of the half-mill reduction in 23 for the 2024 collections that equates to $66,810 less taxes levied for the 2024 budget. Below that is the percentage increase of the prior year's collections, and right below that are the final mill levies for each year. Our 2024 year-to-date collections have increased 7.46% over the collections for the same time period last year. That's at least partially a result of our increase in assessed valuation. Please remember, the increase in revenue comes with increases in our costs as well. Our street work, sidewalks, vehicles, equipment, labor, everything is getting more and more expensive, and we're also trying to do more street work and so forth. We annually receive six property tax distributions from the county. The January distribution is the largest, and June is the second largest due to the first and second half of property taxes being due to the county on December 20th and May 10th respectively. The October and December distributions are the smallest, with December mostly being a cleanup distribution for motor vehicle taxes. If you would please go to the second report. For each type of revenue, we have provided the amount of each full year's collection as well as a year-to-date column that shows how much we've collected this year as compared to collections through the same timeframe in each of the prior years to give you apples and apples to compare to. Some sections of the report reflect year-to-date collections through March and others through April because we haven't yet received all the April payments. So for sales tax, if you'll notice, we have split out the city and county up in the upper-left corner. There's two different sections. Our county sales tax collections, although slightly behind last year's year-to-date collections, continue to do very well compared to all the prior years on the report. The January 2024 receipt is higher than the January amount in all past years, but both the February and March collections this year are less than 2023's corresponding amounts. I hope that isn't a bad sign, but since those two amounts are way ahead of all the previous years and all but one month's collection in '23 was a record high compared to the same month in all the prior years, I'm not too concerned really at this point about it. Additionally, if you recall from my October report, I told you I'd read that 43 million people around the country that had student loans had to start paying them back again after a three-year break due to the pandemic. And I predicted there would likely be a drop in sales tax collections because they would have less money to spend on other things, so I suspect that's part of the issue, too. As for our local 1% city sales tax, there's a two-month lag from the time most businesses collect sales tax until we receive it from the state. Since our local 1% city sales tax went into effect on January 1st this year, the majority of businesses would be required to remit their January sales tax collections to the state by February 25th, and then we would receive it from the state on March 25th. We therefore didn't receive anything in January. In February, we only received 3,527. There are some oddball, some places have to submit on a little different methods, so there is a little bit in February. And then in March, we received $162,913. Franchise fees. We receive franchise tax payments from Evergy, Kansas One Gas, Cox, and Southwestern Bell or AT&amp;T. In most cases, the revenue received by the city is for the utility company's prior month's sales. Collections through the end of March this year are $261,800 as compared to $292,300 for the same time period last year, which is a $30,000 decrease. I generally tell you it's difficult to compare apples to apples on this one because payments aren't always made in the same month, but through the end of March this year, we've actually received the same number of payments from each of the companies as we did last year, and we have received less money from each one of those companies this year than we did last year. I don't really have an answer for why that might be, except that maybe some citizens are setting their thermostats differently, maybe fewer shorter phone calls, so forth, due to rising costs, as well as some of them having to make their student loan payments. Local revenue sharing, that is the casino revenue. Under the MOU between the city of Park City and the Yandotte Nation, the city receives quarterly payments of $187,500, which is $750,000 a year. We have received two of the quarterly payments this year totaling $375,000. Gas tax. We receive these payments quarterly from the state and county, but the time period of the states and the counties' quarters are different. To date, we've received two quarters of the state's payment, but only one quarter of the county's payments. The total of the state's two quarters are a little lower this year than last year, but higher than any year prior to 2023. Gas tax payments nowhere near cover the costs of our street work. In 2023, we budgeted $1 million for street improvements, not including all the other street-related costs we have, and we received only $334,000 in gas tax collections. Our 2023 transfer to the Special Streets and Highway Fund from the General Fund was $1,683,000, the equivalent of 13 mills at $128,677 per mill. Because we must also cover those other street-related costs that include such things as staff salaries and benefits, equipment, fuel, sidewalks, et cetera. So the General Fund subsidized the Special Streets and Highway Fund by five times the amount of the gas tax received last year. If you recall, the gas tax is based on gallons, not dollars, purchased at the pump. The amount charged on each gallon purchase has been unchanged since 2003, so over 20 years ago. Again, as I've mentioned to you in previous reports, the federal government is encouraging more electric vehicles on the road, so unless the method of calculating the gas tax changes, we most likely will soon be seeing decreases in collections each year rather than any increases. Transit guest tax. Collections for the full year of 2023 increased 23%, or $20,140, from those of 2022. Unfortunately, the first quarterly payment in 2024 is only $46,054. It is the lowest first-quarter payment we've received in the history of our INCODE software, which goes back to 2011. It is $8,780 lower than we received this time last year, which was the next lowest first-quarter payment the city has received. However, with a considerable amount of activity that has been proposed for Park City, it is anticipated there will be more hotels constructed in the future, which would increase the future transit guest tax collections once they open and have begun remitting tourism tax to the state. Liquor tax. For the full year of 2023, we collected $182,646, which was $13,480 more than in 2022. If you recall from a prior report, we collected $169,000 in 2022, which was 125% more than the 2021 collection due to liquor being sold at the casino, if you all remember that discussion. We've received only one quarterly distribution so far this year, but it's the highest first-quarter payment in our INCODE software. The second highest was only $895 less in 2022. Interest income. For the full year of 2023, the city received interest income totaling $729,656 as compared to just under $180,000 in 2022. That can be attributed to the Fed raising rates, and although they've stopped raising them, they haven't been inclined to reduce them yet either. For the first three months this year, we've earned $196,627. Okay, to update you on a couple additional items that aren't on the report. ARPA funds. As you're aware, the city received ARPA federal grant funds in 2021 and 2022 for a total allocation of $1,184,857. In July 2023, council committed the full amount of those funds, as well as additional $1.4 million in city funds for a citywide meter replacement and advanced metering infrastructure system. For small entities that have received ARPA funds, April 30th is the deadline to complete and submit a project and expenditure report to the U.S. Treasury through their online portal. Since this is the first report we've completed since council approved a project to spend the ARPA funds on, and since we also actually spent most of the ARPA portion of the funds committed to the project, I submitted a couple questions to the Kansas Office of Recovery last week. Unfortunately, I'm still waiting on a response. In a webinar last week, they were talking about how quick they are to respond. I think they define quick a little different than I do. The deadline is one week from today. On a little different note, but still related to ARPA, entities spending $750,000 or more in federal awards during a year are required to have a single audit performed. Due to the massive number of single audits that would be required due to the huge number of governments that were allocated to ARPA funds and not enough auditing firms to be able to handle all of them in a timely manner, the U.S. Department of Treasury and OMB have made an exception for small entities that received an ARPA allocation of less than $10 million and that would not otherwise have required to have a single audit performed due to other federal spending of $750,000 or more during the year. Those entities that meet that exception are allowed to instead have an alternative compliance examination engagement performed, which is less burdensome. The city of Park City falls into that category. Temporary note. On April 9th, council agenda, council approved the May 14th sale of a $26,425,000 temporary note. That's huge. This comes less than a year after our last bond and temp note issues. Due to the massive amount of development activity in Park City, we're going to have negative unencumbered cash, which is a cash basis violation, if we had not initiated issuance of the temp note when we did. It's a lengthy and very time-consuming process, and I expect more temp notes, as well as potentially some bonds, will probably be issued in the near future with all the resolutions that are being approved for very large amounts. It's really exciting to be working for a city with all these things happening, but please realize it's also a lot of work behind the scenes to keep up the additional workload on top of everything we're already doing. That is the extent of my report. I'd be glad to try to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Dee. Charles.
Go back to the sales tax and on the $166,000 number.
Yes.
January's is paid in February, but the state doesn't pay us until March, correct?
If the vendor, if the business is remitting it for the month of January, what they've collected in January, they have to do so by February 25th.
Right.
The state then sends it back on March 25th. So in the city sales tax, there was nothing collected in January. February was very small, and then March was probably what we'll be seeing as a typical amount.
Okay.
So the majority of that was March.
We really don't have a number yet that would give us an idea what the 1% is going to amount to then yet.
I would guess March is the best thing we've got to go by now, that $160,000.
That won't be available. Wait a minute. That's March's?
Yes, of this year.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions for Dee? Thank you, Dee. Could we save a copy, the leftover copy for Councilman Schroeder and put it in his mailbox, please? Thank you. Okay, next, City Administrator.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. At the last meeting, the mayor requested an update on the Jacksonville intersection, and as we previously discussed, we knew that the overlay that was done approximately two years ago hasn't performed as expected. Staff has been working with the city engineer and the contractor to design a solution to mitigate the groundwater that's present and prevent future issues. That piece of the puzzle is complete, and then just today, we met with Silicent Traffic over in Kechai to formalize a traffic control plan that allows for the work to be done in the fewest phases in the least amount of time while minimizing the impact to the businesses adjacent to the project. I had hoped to be able to present a proposal tonight, but that will need to be pushed until our next meeting on May 14th. In the meantime, we are going to authorize Andale to remove the break in the road between Beaumont Street and Hatton Drive, which will allow it to be used as a detour and not slow progress once the project is approved. Secondly, Champ Town Echo Hill Stormwater Drainage Project is going to start next Monday. The reason why I bring that up is with the amount of land that's being cleared, there will be days and times that there will be clearing and burning vegetation, so we wanted to make people aware. We will also keep it updated on the city's website and Facebook pages. Finally, the community building at Hat McLean Park. The plan had originally been for the building to be complete by May 1st with all the renovations that council approved a couple months ago. But the problem is, during some of the renovations, they realized that there was a severe amount of termite damage that had occurred in the building, and so basically one whole wall had to be taken down and reconstructed and everything. That took an extra week and a half. So therefore, the project's going to slide probably till about May 9th before it is actually complete. A lot of good work going on there, and most of you, I don't think, will recognize it once you go in there with all the improvements being done. And then the last thing that I'd like to do is just offer a kudos to Public Works Department, speaking of Hat McLean Park and the community building. Yesterday, they spent all day as a work party out there, painting playground equipment, planting new bushes, framing out with landscape timbers the playground area, and then installing brand-new rubber mulch, so it's pretty impressive what they got done in a day. So thanks and kudos to Public Works. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Sean. Brandy.
I think Mayor also asked about update on the roundabout and some data. Do you have that information?
I do not as far as a landscape plan or how we would, we're still trying to decipher through different ideas that we can come up with to present to the council. And then the chief, I think that the next meeting is planned on giving the traffic update as far as comparing, because we had to go back a little bit farther in the records to figure out, not pre-construction as to when the last clear year was, but that'll be at the next meeting, ma'am.
Thank you, Ben.
Yeah, I do want to say thank you to the staff here on, since last meeting when we addressed the housing incentive, just the publication of that, as well as the other programs that are offered by the city, I think has been successful and helpful in reaching people and helping them to understand not just the new housing or the new build incentivization that we're doing, but also what we've been doing for a number of years. So thank you for putting those things together. I think the continued exposure of that's just going to be a continued help. I've heard from several realtors and groups in Wichita who have noticed what we're doing. Some of them, I might have told them, and that's how they noticed, but they're still noticing. And, yeah, Facebook and just different things. So thank you for doing that. I think it's a good marketing tool just to keep moving forward, so hopefully we see that start to pay off more.
Thank you, Ben. Okay, moving on, we're on to the consent agenda. Ben.
Yeah, I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Terry.
Second.
Motion by Ben, seconded by Terry. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Onto new business. Discuss and consider a contract with professional engineering consultants for the design, engineering, and construction inspection of Witsen Way and Beaumont Street. Sean.
Yes, sir. At the last meeting, council approved Resolution 1204-2024 roadway improvement for Witsen Way and Beaumont Street. Attached is a contract with professional engineering consultants for the associated design, engineering, and construction inspection of the project. The fees of the engineered design phase will be on a lump-sum basis in an amount of $119,000. The fees for the construction phase inspection services will be on an hourly basis not to exceed $91,000 for a total contract cost of $210,000. It's authorized and funded via temporary financing followed by long-term bonds, and staff recommends approval.
Any questions or discussion about this item? Ben?
Yeah, I'd make a motion to go ahead and approve and authorize the mayor to execute a contract with professional engineering consultants in an amount not to exceed $210,000 to be paid out of the capital projects.
Thank you, Ben. Brandy?
Second.
Seeing no further discussion, motion by Ben, seconded by Brandy. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Onto item six. Discuss and consider approval of a letter of agreement with JEO Consulting Group Incorporated for Design, Engineering, and Construction Inspection of Channel Six Improvements. Gina.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You have before you an agreement outlining the scope and fee for JEO Consulting Group, Inc., to provide engineering services for the Channel Six Drainage Improvements, which is Phase Two of the three phases of the city's stormwater master plan and is identified as a top priority project. Similar to the previous agreement you have seen, it is written under a lump-sum basis for design and engineering and on a cost-per-hour-as-needed basis for construction inspection. This is an unbudgeted item to be paid from the capital project fund, and staff recommends approval for the total cost not to exceed $217,662. I stand before you for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any discussions on this item or motion? Troy.
I don't have any questions. I'd move to approve and authorize the, sorry, wrong one, approve and authorize the mayor to execute a letter of agreement to JEO Consulting Group in the amount not to exceed $217,662 to be paid from the capital funds.
Thank you. Charlie?
Second.
Any further discussion on this item? Motion by Troy, seconded by Charlie. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gina. Onto governing body reports. Charlie?
I do not have anything tonight. George?
Don't have any either.
Ben, this is your time to filibuster.
Yes.
It's only 7:20.
It's Taco Tuesday, so this won't be long. No, I want to say, just a, what can I say? No. Congratulations to Wichita today. I don't like to talk too often about our suburb neighbors to the south, but today, I don't know if you saw the announcement, they landed the U.S. Figure Skating Championships for January of next year hosted at Interest Bank Arena. This is the beginning of the Olympic Trials, basically, so we're going to be having Olympian qualified athletes here in our community, and obviously with that much television and people visiting and being engaged, it's also a good plus for our area, hopefully, as well, as we'll see that happening. And in March, they host Round One and Two of the NCAA tournament, so a lot of good things in our area, but again, so many things happening here as well, so I look forward to that continued work.
Thank you, Ben. Charles?
Hey, I'm glad to see that we've got that meeting scheduled for May 14th. After the last week's, two weeks ago's meeting, I was a little bit confused in the fact that I thought the Schaefer architecture was basically answering a lot of the questions that we should be answering before they be answering before they actually get to that point, you know? And so we, you know, they were answering budget questions when we don't even know what our budget is. And the survey that they referred to, I read that thing forward and backwards, and I felt that the answers that were given in that survey were not necessarily addressed by the architectural firm like I thought they should be. So I'm glad we're going to have that meeting. We can get that all straightened out. That's it.
Thank you, Charles.
I don't have anything tonight.
I don't have anything either.
Brandy.
CCUA meets Thursday at 4:30 in Bel Air this time.
Very good. I don't have anything tonight either, so with that, I would entertain a non-debatable motion to adjourn. Ben?
So moved.
Charlie?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes seven zero. We're adjourned.